If we ever have to do this again. And then finally, I just want to give a shout out to all the teachers. They put a lot of time and effort into getting all their lessons ready to do this and to make their sessions available. They're doing a lot for our students, so I just want to say thank you all.
On the high school end, before we went to school, we had the opportunity to practice for three days during the middle learning. It was great. They provided all of us an opportunity to practice live with these kids. We were the first person that understood that the differences between less grade and this all for middle learning were huge, vastly different. And I think the result was we had great differences. Three days last week, we had almost four kids in the situation. That's not happened since I've been at this school. So that's what I'm going to celebrate on our second full week of middle school.
Middle school wise, we celebrated October with what we call Sun October. Our middle school students also sponsored the event. It's our community service project where we distribute stocks and we donate to organizations that do stuff. Also would like to give a shout out to the chief of health sector, our teaching staff, as well as our students for the way that they have adjusted to how remote learning is gone. A lot of extra effort put into it to make sure things are successful. Lots of contacts that we made. The attendance has been good, as has been mentioned. We have had a little bit of an issue with some internet providers and connectivity. But we've worked through that and we've gone through all of it. There's been a lot of hard work.
The only other thing I have, Stacy, did you have those numbers on lunch? I believe there's been about 175 here in those days.
Yeah, it started off pretty slow. When they, we only had in the sixties for people coming to get meals, but by the end of the past year, we were pushing 200. So the average is probably, I'd say 150 a day. And the kitchen is keeping busy and most of them are taking over lunch and breakfast for the next day. So we encourage people to keep doing that throughout the rest of this week. And just a reminder that even when school starts up again next week, if you have virtual learners or any other children that are zero to 18 that aren't here at the school, meals are available for pickup certain times. You can get it on our website and some doors as well. So please utilize that service. We want everybody to get nutritious meals.
Item B, disclosure conflict of interest.
Not at this time.
Item five, consent agenda, the emotional proof, the minutes financial statement bills. Motion by Brian. Second by Kelly. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same side.
Stacy, can we continue with the honor of a crack factory to deal with our quality video game?
I may be like that to Mr. Weber. I know that the times of like closure last year, he was in the contract and he only moved away half. That amounts, Mr. Weber, to the truth of his two weeks.
Item six, old business, back to school plan. Item I, close contacts quarantine procedure.
I'll kind of get started here, just some background information. Close contact, what that is, is within six feet of a positive person for 15 minutes. If we hear that, then the principals go through what's called contact tracing. Once we get notification from a parent, and that's usually been coming from a parent because the Department of Health is quite far behind, we ask when was the positive person's first symptom? And then we go back two days from there. So anyone who is within six feet for 15 minutes from the two days before the first symptom would be considered a close contact. So for example, if, I'm just going to use the principals as they're sitting here. Brian is in school Monday, Tuesday. Wednesday, he didn't come to school. He didn't feel well. Maybe he had a fever on Wednesday. That was his first symptom. Maybe he gets, doesn't get tested until Thursday. And then we find out maybe on Monday, Tuesday, or the following week, that that becomes a positive. So then we ask Brian, when was his first symptom? Well, that was Wednesday. Then we go two days before that, which would have been the Monday before. And then we do contact tracing and anybody that is in those six feet for 15 minutes within Brian on Monday and Tuesday would be a close contact. Eventually, we get a call hopefully from the Department of Health and they will ask for what's called our workbook. The workbook is putting all the close contacts on a spreadsheet to send to them. So even though Brian was out of school on Wednesday, tested on Thursday, maybe didn't get the positive result until Monday, those kids that are close contacts would have been out the Monday before. As soon as we found out on Monday number two, then we contact them, those kids would be out then starting there, or their first day or 14th day would be the Monday before. So those kids would actually, close contacts are in school until we hear that it's a positive. And again, we need the parents to continue to call in like they have been. Again, the Department of Health is pretty far behind if you haven't noticed, if you've seen some other media things and that sort of thing. So we need the parents to call in as soon as we can. On October 28th and 29th, at that time, we had over 100 students and at least 11 staff gone from school, whether they were positives, close contacts, waiting for results, or anything like that. Of those 100, about 30 were close contacts at the school. Just a couple other things here. The CDC, Department of Health, went back, went recommends required a 14-day quarantine from the last exposure of any close contacts. In September, the Department of Health, Department of Ed recommends 14-day quarantine from last exposure, which says it's up to the local school board. Each district can formulate their own rules. CDC still recommends 14-day quarantine from last exposure. If you are positive, usually, and it depends on your symptoms, but usually out for 10 days, but need to be system symptom or fever free for 24 hours before returning. Or if you're waiting for a test result, you're also out of school until you get those results. Close contact in a household, that means it's in your house somewhere, that would be an automatic 14 days as well. We did a survey, the results are in the packet there. Just kind of went through, change of close contact to three days, five days, seven days, 10 days, or keep it as 14. No matter what that came out of, the positive person would still need to be isolated and the close contact that's in the same household as a positive would need to quarantine as well. So the public, and this was put out all to the public, not just the teacher, our parents. We had about 12% for three days, 5.5% for five, 10% for seven, 6% for 10, about 68% for keeping the quarantine at 14 days. Staff had about 77 reply there, 14% at three, 10% at five, 26% at seven, 13% at 10 days, and about 36% to keep the close contact at 14 days. I emailed a few area schools, I got 13 replied back. I came with these questions. What is the current quarantine time for close contact at your school? Nine of the 13 returned, the student can return if they wear a mask during quarantine time. One school said they can return if both were wearing a mask when a person was deemed a close contact. Two schools, you can return after five days with the mask. One other school has kept the 14-day quarantine. Flandre has kept the 14-day quarantine. Question number two, how many kids have been deemed to close contact at school? The total of all 13 schools, they were at 1,104, again, only at school. Flandre, we've had 45 at that time. Flandre staff, we had 17 deemed to close contact at school during that time. Question number three, on the number from question two, how many kids became a positive during their 14-day period? Of the 13 schools, so out of 1,104, they estimated adding them up to about 20, but from the schools, a lot of them had, it's tough to confirm the contact was at school. Flandre, out of our 45, we had one become positive during their quarantine time. So the area schools was roughly 1.8%. At Flandre, that's roughly 2.2%. And the Flandre staff, at that time, 17 were close contact. One of those became positive during that quarantine time, which is basically 6%. So that's a little bit of history where we're at right now. Board, any questions?
With being deemed to close contact, is that taking like the shields that the kids sit behind you? Is that still considered close contact with the shields?
Yes. So shields, mask, and that, they are still deemed a close contact.
So last month, we had asked for data from the local hospital and tribal clinic and also from the public health nurse. Do we have any of that data?
I've talked to all three, Scott Harman, Leanne Ondal, and Kim Patterson, and it's basically followed the CDC guidelines.
Thank you.
I don't have data on, they couldn't give me that anyway. I didn't ask the data of how many came that way in that situation.
Any other questions anymore? At this time, I'll open it up to the public. I will limit you to three minutes. If you're in a group, please limit yourself to one, twelve persons per group. Sandy.
That's how you used to know me. That's okay. I've been told that you are hard to hear, except for Mr. Weber. So just be sure you're talking into your microphone, please, very clearly. My name is Sandy Shepherd. Brendan and I have four kids that attend Flandre, in attendance school in Flandre. First, I would like to thank you as school board members for the time you put into serving our district. I realize this has been a year full of difficult decisions. Also, thank you to the staff and administrators of our district for all of the effort they have put forth in educating our students in the midst of this uncertainty. Secondly, I acknowledge that this virus is real. However, the way we are attempting to control this virus and the circumstances surrounding it is not realistic. Brendan and I are here along with other concerned parents to express our desire to decrease the quarantine period in order to keep our students in school and to keep our school out of the red face. We believe having our children in school is the best method of educating them. And I would quickly invite those that are here in support of this and that I am visited with to stand, please, in your support. Thank you. You can have a seat. Our school has gone to great lengths to put in place measures of protection for our students. Masks, shields, and air purification system, hand sanitizer, et cetera. I'm not sure we can pinpoint exactly what it is that is working, but with one positive case out of 45 close contacts, something is working. So why can't we trust the measures that we have put in place? I look around at other districts that have managed to reasonably approach this decision, most not having a required quarantine period at all, and ask, why can't our district follow suit? The survey results show opinions. The data shows the facts. We are asking you as elected board members who serve the Flandre School District to make decisions not based on surveys sent to parents and staff, but based on the fact that 44 out of 45 close contacts did not contract COVID. I can't comprehend why we are sending away healthy students into 14 days of quarantine, only to have them return to the classroom as healthy students, all the while missing out on their education. We are going to have this finding in effect academically, emotionally, socially, on our students. And I think we can be confident that if our state reaches a point in which it's no longer safe for our students to be in school, we'll receive direction from the state, like we did in March, with a statewide school closure. But in the meantime, it's detrimental to have a policy in place that causes our district to shut its doors while surrounding districts carry on. Our district has provided a virtual option for parents who are not comfortable with in-person learning. What option is the district giving us, who have a desire to keep our children in school? This year, we have seen opportunities for quality in-person learning slip away from our students. It was shared that after the first week of remote learning, there are a number of students that are not completing their work. What is Monday going to look like when everyone goes back to school? Once again, are teachers going to have to spend that time catching students up? There's been a lot of discussion surrounding test scores over the years, and this would be a very tangible way for you as a board to support involvement in this area. We as parents are counting on you to make the decision to drastically shorten the length of quarantine in order to give quality education back to our students, like they so deeply deserve and need. We cannot let our fears associated with this virus drive us to make decisions that negatively impact a population at minimal risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Maria.
Maria and Yasmin. Tonight, you will be presented with a request to look at the quarantine procedure. I know all of you take your oath to look and make decisions that are based on the best interests of our students and including the staff that you employ seriously. We are in a temporarily challenging time, and it's like an avalanche or a traumatic event. We are trying to dig out of it. It has affected our structure and changed how we go about things at school, but we will get out of it if we approach it the correct way. When caught in an avalanche, you can resist it. You must resist it, you must wait it out, and you'll get bummed and you'll get jostled around. And when it's over, you'll start to dig out. It's important to not start out digging before you are ready. That's why we have protocols in place. If you start digging in the wrong direction, like in an avalanche, we'll just bury ourselves deeper. In some schools, it is considered an outbreak when there are two or more confirmed laboratory cases among staff and students within a 14-day period. We did have that. We had a straightforward protocol, and it is a challenge at times and an inconvenience, but once again, it is temporary. It is important to follow these protocols. Like I said last month, when we allow digging in the wrong direction or cracks in our plan, then we start to have problems, such as having to go into the red case. I do agree, one thing we did not have in place for our students is something to do to address the quarantine process for our students. So maybe that is more of the issue, not that they're out of school, but we didn't have a plan in place on how we were going to address their education at that time. We should not compare this to out of school extension, as each are a different topic or a different protocol. I want to also say that at no time should anyone be belittled, threatened, or harassed when they have contracted the virus or when having to provide close contact. If this is happening in our school, it's bullying, and both of us should be ashamed. We must also remember that there's research that shows children can give the virus to adults, and then they may not show symptoms or have mild symptoms, which is why a 14-day quarantine process is important. One other thing we need to remember is our students will persevere, and they will overcome this. They will gain knowledge, they will gain skills needed as adults if we do not continue to make them feel that this virus will cause otherwise. They will not be less because of this virus, but they will be stronger.
My name is LaShelle Brown, and I'm here to tell you why I am here tonight to support a shorter quarantine period for the students. I am a nurse, and my husband is a farmer. Neither are 95 jobs. In fact, my shift work at the hospital consists of 12-hour days and 12-hour overnights. We have five children in the district, and our family is fortunate enough to have both sets of grandparents close by that offer help and support to our families to enable us. This information is relevant because it brings up my first concern with continued distance learning. The old cliche is true, it does take a village to raise a child. Educators are a huge part of our village. With school operating in the red face, coaches, our children are losing the vital connections they will receive with teachers, counselors, coaches, and peers that would come much easier with in-person education. With all of my family's personal resources and easy access with three different internet providers, teaching five kids at home has still proven to be extremely difficult. I recognize how difficult it must be for the families that don't have additional resources needed for successful distance learning. What about the single-parent families? Families that don't have grandparents or other family members close by to offer help? Families that can't take any more time off of work to stay home and help their children navigate distance learning? This brings me to my second concern. The added stress and anxiety that distance learning is putting on families in the district. Mental health related to this subject is a huge concern that should be considered by the board. We have plenty of necessary measures in place to keep our kids physically safe, masks, shields, hand sanitizer, frequent hand washing, social distancing, et cetera. What are we doing to address their mental health and emotional health? I have seen the worry and uncertainty in my own kids' faces when we were preparing for distance learning. How many high schools would actually admit to having anxiety associated with distance learning? Would they willingly share if they were scared or felt unprepared? Are junior high and middle school students even capable of identifying anxiety as real emotions, and are they coping with these emotions in the helping area? Again, resources to address these concerns would be more readily available, more easily accessible, and identifiable for our students if they were in school. Ask for junior and senior students if they feel distance learning is effectively preparing them from college. Is it? Are we really educating our students in the best and safest way to continue to run in the red face? As we all know, school provides so much more to our students than just education. Our kids are kept safe and they are provided with two balanced meals a day. The free lunches are great, but please consider the rural families. My family lives 10 miles out of town. It is either practical, cost-effective, or time-efficient for me to drive 20 miles round trip to get a breakfast or lunch for my kids. If school was in session, kids would have easy access to these two, three meals. Parents wouldn't have to worry about how their kids were going to eat when mom and dad are at work. How are the kids going to get fed when the weather is not cooperative? If mom and dad are at work and the kids are not old enough to drive, how are they going to get their lunch from the school? I know it's not easy to decide what is right or what is wrong. Nobody knows what is 100% right or wrong at this time, but I would urge you to consider what seems logical for our students. In my opinion, in-school learning is a far more effective way to advance their education and prepare them for becoming productive, responsible members of society. When I was visiting with one of the district's most seasoned elementary teachers on the first day of distance learning, I had contacted her when I had some questions about the traffic. She politely asked me how everything was going, and I answered her honestly. This is really hard. Her response shook me and put me in her place with what she said. And you know what, LaShelle, your little guy is fully capable of doing this. We have a lot of kids who will struggle when they get back. Where will the kids be when they get back? Depending on how long they're out, will they be ready to move forward? Will they feel prepared or adequate? Will they have the necessary support and resources at home that they should have, would have, and could have had at school? I know you have to consider the physical health of the students, but please, please also consider the mental and emotional consequences coming along with this. The stress put on students and families at home is real and difficult. I hope my concerns addressed in this letter do not come across as unappreciative or insensitive to policies previously put in place by the board. I am optimistic that with the board willing us to be flexible and make changes to the policies as previously stated in meetings, that we can figure out a way to get our kids back in school. Educators and students are essential.
Becky Kramer. I wanted to continue with what Sandy Shepherd had said in the letter that you guys were provided that was online, that the policies, sometimes when you guys look at them, the ideology changes between one policy to another as to any one time that's appropriate to be in or out of school. That's addressing her points on number five and six. On number eight, I can personally attest to the kids having a hard time catching up when they fall behind when it's online. And specifically, a middle schooler telling me that it's harder to learn from home. It's easier when you're in school and with your teachers. When you look at the number of days you want to keep kids out, yes, we have the CDC guidelines, but also, again, the mental health issue is huge. Personally, we've struggled with that severely, and there has been no part of the policy where there's a clause to be able to handle extreme or unusual circumstances. So when you look at this, I please ask if you consider that, because sometimes this isolation or this being out of school can be even more detrimental than the virus itself. In talking with a lab tech on the tests, you can get false negatives when there's not enough antibodies in your system. And so even at the tribal health clinic, they won't test you till after five days because they want to make sure your antibodies are enough that you do have a positive that's true and not a false negative. I also know that five thermal image scanners were given to the school by the tribe, and I'm not sure why we're not using them for anybody that walks into the building to immediately catch fevers and some of these that are maybe coming to the school sick, that they could be caught right as we're walking in the building. So I would hope that we can start using some of the equipment that we already have available to us to keep everyone in the building safe. And also that teachers keep an eye on the kids, that if they deem or hear some of the kids coughing or say they don't feel good, or, you know, don't keep them in class. Because I know that happened to one where they were allowed that whole hour and a half and would call it after that. But the teachers, I think, need to help monitor it, and not all the parents can do that. Like if I go to work, if my kids even get up, I don't know that they're sick, or they can't reach me to ask if they can stay home. The expectation is to be at school. So some of those kids are still following those ethical expectations. Please consider at least reducing the days and looking at the mental health issues. Please consider at least reducing the days and looking at the mental health issues.
I believe that Dr. Russell and you, the entire dentists in this community, thank you for your opportunity to do this. The good end of rest of the mask mandate, and it's not the only positive way to achieve that potential to address it. But first of all, I'm qualified now. For 39 years, I've had to protect my staff and my patients in the way that I work in my office on a regular basis. So I had to order, prepare, set protocols for best control throughout those years with my staff, my colleagues, rely on my abilities to be able to determine what is appropriate in the way we do this. Now back to the mask mandate. I believe in masks, but it largely depends on the use and I won't go into that. And the only issue I guess I'd like to bring up here is if you believe in your mask mandate that it's going to protect that individual person, then why do you have a 14-day quarantine? Because what you're doing is you're saying if you want a 14-day quarantine, the masks don't work. So you have to either decide that the masks will protect your students when they're there, properly used, even if they've had a contact with somebody else. You don't believe that the masks work, then you better stick to your 14-day quarantine. So do you see what I'm saying? You have to decide one or the other. You can't really do one or both of them. And again, I can give you my personal opinion, I'm not here to do that, but again, my point is you have to rely on your mask mandate if that's what you want. Look at the other schools that are, I mean, truly one of the schools that is out of 14 days. So please consider that. If you decide that you want to keep the 14-day, then I'd suggest that you rescind your mask mandate because you don't believe in the masks.
Hi, my name is Nicole Presley and I had children in the district for a long time. And I just want to ask all of us in our communities, we just proclaimed in such a legal day, we are one nation, one God, invincible, the liberty and justice for all. And I'm just asking that we all take off our armor of fear and put on the armor of faith because faith will move our doubts home. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Pat Heinemann. I want to ask you to keep the 14-day quarantine. Several issues. CDC, South Dakota Board of Health, the local health department said it's a 14-day quarantine regardless. Apparently, you know, I know distance learning is not easy. My son's done the Ingenuity before. We spoke about this this summer. Ingenuity is not a good program. It's extremely hard for kids to do. They're self-guided unless they have, you know, if they have questions, they would need to get ahold of a teacher and that is hard to do also. Apparently, distance learning this last week and a half has been going fairly well. I would assume due to the fact that you're having better attendance than you do on a normal school day. My point, and I brought this up this summer, was about those shooter protocols. You've had a number of staff come up positive, not sure if it was due to being associated in the school or not, but numbers in this county are shooting higher every day, they're shooting higher every day in the state. I don't know if the school district is under the same regulations that my business is, but if I would end up being positive in my place of business due to my place of business, that is a motion reportable and our insurance goes up. I just want to restate again, School Board, please keep the 14-day quarantine because it works.
Trace Heinemann, I'm going to speak after Pat because Pat and I have been here June, July, August, September, October, November. I think we missed one meeting on all the multiple meetings. And I think all the time that constantly I kept asking for if academics is our number one priority, then that's what we need to be focused on. Just some comments here, we've had mental health issues long before COVID, so it is a real issue. It hasn't been addressed then, it still needs to be addressed. So we all need to come together on that. There's no doubt about that. We all can learn and do better. When it comes to the comments about the high school kids, and I'm just speaking high school, like I did in July, the rates are one out of every 34 people in South Dakota or in Moody County had COVID. Now we're nine out of every 10. So our numbers, back in July, we knew we were going to get here. I spoke to that after I'd been at a pulmonary appointment with my son. He's the pulmonologist that puts all the vent patients on the varicose. Said, yes, the measures do work, the masks do work if worn properly. I have seen enough social media posts from our athletic community, the masks not worn, the masks under the nose. All you need to do is watch Live Ticket and watch the social media and up there. So we do not, we are not holding ourselves accountable. There's a personal responsibility, as we know in this state, but the accountability comes back to us and that's where we break down, that's where the measures break down. Sit outside in the morning, and I'm talking just high school, and that's where they have the largest respirations. That's what I talked about, operate your preschools differently. All agree, elementary's tough, the little kids are tough, the middle school. High school's much different. You're preparing them for the next generation in learning. Any of you that had kids in college or have kids now or juniors and seniors, if you say online learning doesn't work, and I guarantee you're not going to want to do dual enrollment, which is a great cost savings, and I know a lot of you that have seniors, junior seniors have done it, you save a lot of money and you got a lot of tuition and a lot of credit by the way. That's what they're being prepared for. It's worked beautifully. I listened in this week just as I was walking by. It's worked, they're engaged. I'm talking high school, specific high school. Operate your schools separately. This is where your problem is, just look at the numbers, the students are high, there's a reason. What's the reason? Where's the risky behavior? You know what? Our kids, four high-risk factors, we follow, we do all the things right, and we're very fortunate we haven't had. Yeah, there's concessions you have to make. If you participate in golf or the mask, helped with the football team, wore the mask. He wears the mask. He wore the mask to a vampire. I don't think any other kid did. He's willing to do what it takes to protect himself. That's all this is about, is protecting everybody at this point. But has everybody been doing everything right or is there risky behavior? So I don't even know why we're discussing this again. We have enough guidelines to above.
Mr. Stager, can I read a letter that was sent to me today? The person could not be here. This is from Jan Zephier. She could not make it tonight. Board is letting school district decide what is best for them based on the survey results. School board is correct in leaving as it is. As it is apparent, the majority of the public and staff expressed they agree with that process. Masks are only our one preventive measure. They are not a be-all, end-all measure. They help the virus from spreading as quickly, not stop the spread completely. I don't believe it's the school's responsibility to monitor students in quarantine. Parents are responsible for their children and they need to show that responsibility. Some parents may need reminders. Comparing of the drug alcohol policy with quarantine policy is comparing apples to oranges. Preparing to change a virtual learning policy to allow student return at the nine weeks and says semester was a decision that did not adversely affect other students or staff with concerns to COVID-19. Changing the quarantine period potentially can harm other students and staff. The quarantine period is not just about students, it is the duty and obligation of Flagler School Board to also consider the health of its staff and community. Moody County is in the midst of our worst community spread and everyone needs to be responsible and bringing it under control. If that means a 14-day quarantine for now, then that is what needs to be done. The survival rate for persons 0 to 19 may be 100%, but the long-term effects are unknown. Let's be cautious and smart regarding the students' health. 28 families supported a request to change a three-day quarantine, but 494 families responded in the survey to keep the 14-day quarantine. That is 68% of the respondents, which is quote, clearly a majority of the staff members, 75%. Prefer either leave it at 14 days or go to either seven or 10 days. Again, they clear majority. Finally, let's not make the quarantine period about sports. Thank you, Jan Zephier. Family member of staff and students of Flagler Building Schools concerned and community member. Anyone else in the public?
Hi, Natasha Luthmer. I teach kindergarten here. I just want to give a staff point of view for elementary, I guess, more than anything. We have tried supermarch to follow all the policies of the board and the state that we're placed. But I just want to point out with your guys' shields, that's how we use them in the classroom. However, we are so close because we have so many kids in the classroom that if you look at your neighbor, that shield does nothing. Or for my kind of situation, those masks do not stay on their face. I don't know who made masks, but we need some smaller ones. So we are trying everything that we possibly can, but unfortunately, the staff are the ones that are getting sick. Yes, we want our kids here. Yes, we would love to have them here and teaching them face-to-face. Right? Red flags, sticks, yes, but we are doing everything that we can. But I just wanted to bring up the staff more than anything because the staff are the ones that are getting sick. And I personally have to, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Anyone else in the public?
Anyone else in the public? See, no more public discussion, we'll move it on to the board.
I'd like to make a motion to move to a three-day quarantine outside of school for kids considered close contacts in school. When they return to school after their three-day quarantine, then if they're required with their masks, they remain under their 14-day quarantine.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I would second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Roll call. Jamie?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tammy?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And Tom, is an aye. Motion carries.
So just to make sure principals and I have this correct, so this will be if somebody's deemed close contact in school, their quarantine date time will be seven days from the last exposure to that positive person.
That's correct. I have two. Fan attendance rules for winter activities.
The Activity Association Task Force came out with their winter sports rulings and they follow our, they were okayed by their board of directors last week. I was just going to highlight some of those as we'll continue to follow those. Basically, in the basketball area, the only real changes had to deal with some of the, you know, no shaking hands after games and things like that. Wrestling got a little bit more in-depth just because of the nature of the sport. In wrestling practice, they are hopefully practiced in pods, so three, four kids at the same weight class stay there in their own area by themselves and so on and so forth. Contest, if anybody's a positive, we're supposed to let the other schools know. For regular season tournaments, each tournament is capped at 112 participants and no more than 12 teams. So for example, our Flagler Invitational Tournament, this year we'll have nine teams. Normally, we have 10, but Laverne is not allowed by Minnesota State Activity Association to come to South Dakota. We will have nine, so we're under the 12, and 112 athletes, there's 14 weight classes, eight in each weight class, so that would be a full goal. We are normally under that, not a problem. For example, a big East Conference, Lake Central Conference tournament, we have 14 teams in that, so that's automatically over the allowed limit. And we'll have to come back, last year there was actually 122 people in that, so I have a Zoom meeting on Wednesday morning with conferences to figure out what we have there. We have been kicked out, I don't want to say kicked out, we have been uninvited to a few wrestling tournaments already because, for example, we go to Wagner for a tournament, they have 19 teams that go there. Great question. Here is a VAERS recommendation provided by Dr. David Beisel, the vice president of VAERS Medical Group. I've seen a lot of schools loosen up the restrictions, but the CDC guidance in VAERS policy is a full 14-day isolation for close contacts even with a mask on. Seventy-two hours will not work because it takes two to 14 days after exposure, with five to six days being median, before a test would even turn positive or symptoms would appear. Seventy-two hours is at the very start of this window and would only catch about 10% of those that will eventually turn positive. The recommendation is to stay at the 14-day for all close contacts. So with that, I just feel that we need to stay with the 14-day. We have a huge demographic of Native American and other, and they have a higher chance of having COVID issues due to health concerns.
Do I have a motion on the floor for a 7-day? Do I have a second?
I'll second a motion.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign?
Aye.
Roll call. Jamie?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tammy?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And Tom is an aye. Motion carries.
So just to make sure principals and I have this correct. So this will be, if somebody's a deemed close contact in school, their quarantine date time will be seven days from the last exposure to that positive person.
That's correct. Item two, fan attendance rules for winter activities.
The Activity Association Task Force came out with their winter sports rulings and they follow, or they were okayed by their board of directors last week. I was just going to highlight some of those because we'll continue to follow those. Basically, in the basketball area, the only real changes had to deal with some of the, you know, no shaking hands after games and things like that. Wrestling got a little bit more in-depth just because of the nature of the sport. In wrestling practice, they are hopefully practiced in pods. So three, four kids at the same weight class stay there in their own area by themselves and so on and so forth. Contest, if anybody's a positive, we're supposed to let the other schools know. For regular season tournaments, each tournament is capped at 112 participants and no more than 12 teams. So for example, our Flandrew Invitational Tournament this year will have nine teams. Normally, we have 10, but Laverne is not allowed by Minnesota State Activity Association to come to South Dakota. We will have nine, so we're under the 12, and 112 athletes. There's 14 weight classes, eight in each weight class, so that would be a full goal. We are normally under that, not a problem. For example, a big East Conference, Lake Central Conference tournament, we have 14 teams in that, so that's automatically over the allowed limit. And we'll have to come back. Last year, there was actually 122 people in that. So I have a Zoom meeting on Wednesday morning with conferences to figure out what we have there. We have been kicked out, I don't want to say kicked out. We have been uninvited to a few wrestling tournaments already because, for example, we go to Wagner for a tournament. They have 19 teams that go there. Obviously, they cut it back to 12, so we would not be invited. McCook Central over Christmas break is another one. They have quite a few teams. So they will not take us for one year and that sort of thing. Another thing, we can have duels and triangles and quads. No problem there. You can only have two days of competition in the calendar week. That does not affect us because we usually wrestle a quad on a Tuesday, Thursday, then a tournament on Saturday. But if we would wrestle on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, we would have to get some of those out of the way. And the big thing also, if you're talking about tournaments, says schools should strongly consider restricted tickets or no fans at individual multi-team tournaments to allow space for wrestlers to social distance when not competing. So if we had a tournament here, if we had 112, obviously, they have to social distance as well. So we have to look at reducing the fan attendance for wrestling, and we'll get through that here. Other general considerations, no community gatherings. Wrestling tournaments are notorious for hospitality rooms. That will not happen. Clean and sanitize. They talk about changing uniforms every time you wrestle. We bought skin cream for the kids and that sort of thing. Another one is sideline cheer. They need to space off at least six to 10 feet off court. No stunning when anybody's on the court and that sort of thing. So that moves us into what's in the packet. I'll get there. First one is dealing with high school basketball. We have kind of two options for vouchers, but some of the other stuff will remain in both of those. One, I would like to split the gym down half-court. So you have like in the high school gym, you have the stage side and you have the other side. So we split the court down the side so the visitors would sit behind their bench and then across the court from their bench. And then Flandrew can sit behind our bench, across the bench, and then move our cheering section to the stage because that's where the cheerleaders will be as well. We would also be roping off like we did in volleyball. Rope off behind the scorestable and we'd also rope off a little bit behind each bench. Again, we don't want somebody from the opposing team sitting right behind our bench and breathing and that sort of thing, even though they do have their masks on. Couple options, again, very similar to volleyball. The one trick in basketball is we have double headers, so that comes into play there. So option one for vouchers is that do it like volleyball. And this is if it's a single, let's just say the boys are playing. They could have four vouchers per game. If the girls are playing by junior varsity in the varsity game, they could get four vouchers. Double headers, they probably have to go to two because now you're dealing with double the number of people there. The other option, again, masks are required and all that like we had in volleyball. The other voucher option we would have, our high school gym seating has capacity of 873, so that's about 425 is half. You throw in all the players and that sort of thing, you're looking at 150 per school. So if we were playing Sioux Valley in a girls' basketball game, we'd get 150 for our players, parents, et cetera. Sioux Valley gets 150, and then we would have 50 for adult community members as well. That's just another option there as well. Any questions on the basketball before I move into the wrestling aspect?
On option one, is there extra adult tickets or vouchers for that one or is it just for option two?
We definitely could make it, but I would probably cut it down to only three vouchers then if we're going to have a public portion. Again, all trying to keep spacing, you know, about 400 to 425 tops in the gym to make it 50% capacity.
Question on the High School Sports Association packet that was sent out?
Yep.
They recommend going to a tier system on whether or not the school park is able to attend for spectators.
Yes, that was in the fall as well, and you, the board, decided to do the voucher system. So that's why I'm bringing up the vouchers again.
So has everybody on the board read that tier system?
The tier system? Yep. And you go.
Like fourth page in.
Which one?
Like fourth page in on the bottom.
Yep. So this is what some schools use. They use the tier system. So tier one is open attendance. So pretty self-explanatory. Open, just like we have, we were last year, pre-COVID stuff. Tier two is parents and student body only. So that does not include grandpa, grandma. That does not include elementary, parents and student body only. Tier three is student body or parents only. And tier four is no fans. So that's the Activities Association tiers. I do know there were some schools, I believe we went to Esteline this year in the volleyball match, and they were in tier three and only parents were allowed to attend, as I recall. Tier one is open.
But they also say that these different tiers are relevant with the community outbreak within the local community.
Correct. So for example, tier one, steady decreasing rates of community active cases, new cases and hospitalization. Tier two, which is parents and student body only, slow intermittent increase of community activity cases, new case of hospitalization, isolated cases, no evidence of exposure in large communal settings. Tier three, which is student body or parents, steady increment increase of community active cases, new cases and hospitalizations, sustained increase potential exposure in large communal settings. Tier four, which is no fans, a sharp increase of community active cases, new cases and or hospitalizations without concurrent increase of cases contacts within the school setting, confirmed exposure in large communal settings. I did talk with the two basketball coaches, our head coaches, and they would be in favor of the 150 vouchers. So we have basically a single game, boys' basketball game. They would get, the boys' basketball team, get 150 vouchers. If we have a double header, basically, in a sense, each one would get 75. And again, the junior high is there as well, just followed what we did with junior high volleyball. There is no fan limitation there. Just masks are required whenever in the school.
I would make a motion to accept the voucher two option.
I have a motion on the floor to accept voucher two.
I'll second.
Second by Brian. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign?
Aye.
Roll call. Jamie?
Tom.
Kelly?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tammy?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Tom, aye.
To wrestling, again, depending on what we have. We host three quads, I believe, this year and one tournament. For the tournament, if, again, I talked about 112 total wrestlers with no more than 12 teams. Talking to Coach Genslinger today, he would like to see that at two vouchers per participant there. Again, trying to keep to a 50% max and that sort of thing. Do it very similar for quads, only that would go to four since we're only dealing with three other teams. And we would have some set aside for adult community as well.
Junior high or junior varsity?
Yeah, we would still, because we would be under the limits of the Activities Association for our JV Jamboree, we would still be looking at that. Have not contacted those teams yet, but I know Pipestone usually comes, Laverne comes. I know they're not going to be able to, so we'll probably be down to, I'm just estimating, 75 or less participants in that.
So probably again, the two vouchers for junior high.
Yeah, we could go that way, or since it's junior high, we could let them. But it's not really junior high, it's junior varsity, so we would go probably to two vouchers because it's a jamboree slash tournament.
Do I have a motion for the wrestling?
I want a motion for wrestling, Tom.
Yeah, motion. Motion by Kevin, second by. Second by Brian. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign?
Aye.
Roll call. Jamie?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tammy? Carrie?
Aye.
Tom, aye. Motion passes.
Can I ask for clarification on something? I did have my hand, but I must not have been on the table. It's not, it's just a clarification.
Okay, what is that?
I apologize. I promised I wasn't going to make any comments tonight. I just want clarification on, I guess I wasn't ready for the basketball and the wrestling. So the options that you went for gives the extra tickets to only adult community members. So as of right now, there's no extra tickets for seventh and eighth grade anyone might have. But we are okay letting in kids under the age of five, but I just, it's just a clarification so that we understand that none of our kids are going to get into if they want to go. Is that correct?
Right. Both of you have to be saying this clearance. Like if you want your fifth, sixth, seventh, or eighth grader to get in, do parents have to do that? Or if your kid being at school, right to the office, maybe we'll get tickets. Kind of having access before other people get in.
Right, and that was going to be my comment. Before our kids were allowed to go to the office to ask for a voucher, with this, they will not be able to agree, to ask for a voucher, correct? Because it only goes to adults.
That's correct.
The tickets don't just go to adults. It's just the adults have to call in and claim the ticket.
But it says.
Like, isn't that right?
Doesn't it say you will get a, it says an extra 50 for adult community members. There is nothing in here that says that our students can, and that's why I'm asking for clarification. Am I reading that correct or not? I'm just asking.
That is the way I'm going to do it. So at this point, I don't know where they are unless we lighten up the voucher system.
Right, okay, and that's all I was asking.
Thank you. Item three, outside use of facilities.
This came to my attention. We are allowing like little kids' basketball practices and AAU wrestling practice when everybody's out in the building. What about their games, if they want to play a game on a Saturday morning or something like that? We did not address that. We allow them to hold practices within our facility in the evenings. So just asking for clarification on that as well.
Discussion? Right now, you, right now, you said that we're allowing practices.
Correct. You guys allowed practices from way back when.
We love volleyball. Use volleyball in the hall.
Yes, we just didn't have any.
I don't have a problem with them coming as long as they follow the, they're in their own high school. And I talked to the AAU wrestling guys today and they said they will do, they will mirror everything a high school can do. So they'll cap tournaments. They might just do quads or tries instead of the tournament.
My thought is for Flandrew District School, yes, involvement, then yes. But for outside, I'd say no. As long as they follow the rules of what we're doing at this point already. And subject to change if things need to be changed. Sergeant, do I have something to make a motion to that?
What do you mean by outside?
Nobody from outside the building at this time are outside groups coming in and using.
So what is AAU?
That's the, 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 we wrestle. Yes.
I have a motion, Tom.
I'll second.
Motion by Jamie, second by Kevin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign?
Aye.
Roll call. Jamie?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tammy? Carrie?
Carrie.
Tom is an aye. Motion carries. Item, item four, staff work from home during the red phase.
I had a board member ask to put this on the agenda as we're in red phase right now. We have the staff work from the school and I just wanted to talk about that.
My question would be, is there, is there a point for what would be the qualifications or if there would be any that would allow this? Are there any circumstances that we would allow the teachers or eighteen to work from home? If, or is it just strictly in the school?
You asking my opinion?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I don't have.
I would, I would say if it has to, if we have a lot of positives at the school where we're going to do the super clean, which we do every day, that sort of thing, if it's out of control. Again, this red phase had something to do with close contacts as well as staff being out. So I guess it would come down to that.
I'd say I didn't, I don't have an issue with it. I just was wondering if there was a point where it became a necessity, if it would be considered or individual cases. And that was just my, what.
My concern would be if you start taking exceptions for personal circumstances. It gets really great. So I, my personal thought is staff needs to come to school to do the job.
I think.
Is it on? Okay. And I also think if we have a concern with that, that then we need to look at our protocols and make sure that our staff feel safe when they're coming to work. So making sure that we're looking at what we have for. So making sure that we're looking at what we have for protocols in place for the teachers when they're here and it's just the faculty and staff here. And if they feel safe, and if they don't, why and what other precautions could we put in place? I know, Mr. Tom, I appreciate you stating that you had your meeting with your staff and you assessed now where you're at, what you need to work on, and if times may happen. I think we're all learning and that's exactly what we need to do. We're not going to always get it right because we've never been through this. But to really sit down and assess what our strengths were when we completed the first week and what our weaknesses were, what we needed to change, that's exactly how you are able to successfully get through all of this, so thanks for doing that.
Can I get a clarification though? If we have a staff member that has COVID, would they be allowed to get home? I think we should, because that staff member is still going to teach from home and be able to operate at school.
Obviously, yes, if they're a positive or whatever. We did have one person that was waiting for results and still did his teaching from home because he couldn't come to school waiting for results.
That's great, right? That's why we got them essential markers so they could make, still keep contact with the students. So do I have a motion that would state that the staff workers are at school during the red phase unless COVID related?
Do we get a motion?
Do we have to?
Contact.
That's where we're at.
Your contact.
Is this where we're at right now?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Well, our back to...
Our back to school plan says students and staff remotely, but we also have subject to change there as well.
So if we have it in our plan right now that they could be at school or have one change?
It would probably be cleaner if somebody had made a motion if that's what the board so desires.
That's what I would like to do. We all agree.
I'll get the motion, if the staff need to be in school unless they're positive or need to...
Yeah, I got a motion by Jamie. Second by...
I'll second.
Second by Carrie. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same sign? Motion passes.
I don't know if we can do this or not, but going back to the, about the point of the basketball. When I, when I read that, I, and I made my motion, I was under the assumption that the 50 tickets were available for pickup or for calling by adult. But it was for, if the under middle school elementary could have them. Because down below it said, okay, middle school and high school or middle school and elementary will be admitted with vouchers. So I'm sorry, but when I made the motion, I was under the assumption that the parents were, the adults were calling in, but younger students could use them. So I'm just, I...
They are handed out to adults. And that's still, the four vouchers that each person gets, each athlete gets, that most could also go to, yes, we've got the apple to apple for clarification on this.
Because the article two does not state that the individuals each get the four tickets. Am I right? I'm, I'm sorry to ask you.
So which one are you looking at, voucher two?
Yes.
So voucher two, I would, where the boys' basketball team is playing Sioux Valley.
Yep.
I would give Coach Shepard, Shepard 150 vouchers to Dean, what he wants to do with his team.
So when I made my motion and it said we had an extra 50, I was, in my head, it was adults would call, calling to pick up those, so they could be used for under, really...
Yeah, but we, yeah, but the deal here, we just don't want to hand them out to school.
Right, so...
So if Jamie calls school, let's say eight o'clock that day, we'll have like a will call.
Yep, and so you could get three tickets, or three younger children could use those tickets, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that was what I meant when I made that motion. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't just adults that could use the tickets.
We will hand them out to adult community members.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry to go back on that.
No, that's fine. Item B, under old business, it's the second reading of renaming the track after Gus Barnes and John Evans. This is the second reading of the third reading. Comment?
I just want to speak and present respectfully, I just want to speak as you present this reading and you honor the coaches or others' lives that have gone to FHS. Which I think is a really, really good idea, it's great to have. But I also ask that you keep in mind that all lives at FHS matter and to honor all lives as equally as possible of those who have passed as opportunities come up and present themselves.
Seeing all the other comments, move on to item seven, new business, the calendar.
Again, this was brought to my attention through board members about possibility of taking the two weeks off at Christmas time. Right now, we come back, I believe the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, 23rd's a Wednesday. I have a 1:30 out that day before break starts. So I just want a discussion about taking the full two weeks off at Christmas time. And then if that is, then we put those three days in May then, just to get that break going here and get that full two weeks, that sort of thing. The other option comes into play, or the other thought is that that's two and a half days of classified staff would not have, they would not have their time, their working hours at that time.
Right. Then, I know I asked you this before, but if we gave the full two weeks off at Christmas, do we have to make up those three days in May? I know that there's minutes that can be counted, did we look at that?
Yes, we have, obviously not knowing what snow days and that sort of thing are going to look like. But yeah, we would, if we didn't add those three days to May, if we just dropped them off, we would still have enough minutes.
When do we get out of state break?
I believe it's Friday the 14th.
I like the idea of extending Christmas break and shifting those days to May for now. And possibly then come post-Christmas break, whether we count the days or just wait until over.
So as of right now, the last day is Friday, May 14th. So if you throw those three days, obviously you'd be looking at Wednesday of the following week. That would be the last day there, if those three days would move.
So after the discussion, do we have a button on the calendar for in regards to testing?
So semester tests then, if those would be done on Thursday, Friday of the week before. December 17th and 18th.
The only thing I have, our days for semesters are going to get thrown off. And if we think it's Tuesday and Wednesday would not be bad days to test. I know you don't test on Mondays, but if we wanted to get to the two week off, I would rather see this go on the backside of Christmas vacation than on the front side so that our semester time stays more even and the students. If you want to have the two week cleansing time, I would rather see it after New Year's or three more days than before the Christmas. Because that would go to the next semester, and we usually hit it 86 days on one and 89 on the other, now it's going to be 83. If you add those three days on, it's going to be, you're supposed to be getting the same amount done semester to semester.
Right now, if we finished on the 23rd, that would be 87 days, so second semester would be 88 to get to 175. If you took those three off, it'd be 84 and 91.
And I'd rather do it at the end, and then that semester, if we deem that it's necessary for those three days, we could add them on in May, so then the days would be the same for semester.
Right now, we come back Monday, January 4th. So if you throw three days in there, obviously Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we would start on a Thursday. No, I, I believe he's talking about we would still go to school on the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, 21st, 22nd, 23rd.
And you do your semester test on that Tuesday and Wednesday. And then we'd still stay at our 87 days for the first semester. And then even after, we have 88 days in the second semester. When you teach a semester class, how can you just drop a week's time? That now you, if you're already crammed for time to get your material across in 87 days, now you're going to drop it down to 84 days plus get the semester test in there. I mean, you had that anyway, so that doesn't change anything, but you're still a week less in that first semester than you are in the second semester. So if we're talking education from a teacher that teaches those semester courses, they'd have to make up a week somehow if you shorten that. And I don't think that's fair to the teacher to try and get the same quality of education through with a week less in their semester.
The other option is for us to just leave the calendar at this point. And I guess I can see a few perks for that. It's what we put out there at the beginning of the year, the staff are depending on the thing. As far as I'm concerned, we have a structure, roll calls in our school and most places in our community. So of course, hopefully, it's probably safer here than mostly.
Also, we could deem right before Christmas that if we deem that it was, that we needed the two week cleansing of the school, we could change it at that point and then put it on to the backside. But if we don't have the outbreak coming up, then I don't know why we deem, have to deem having a two week cleansing period and change our Christmas vacation. But I am, I've always fought, tried to keep the semesters safe, the safe throughout the years. And we did really good at, once we switched the schools starting before, that like semesters went down to that.
I think as far as we talk about mental health for our teachers and our staff, that letting them have the extra three days, I think would be good for them. And I kind of actually like the idea after Christmas, then you get through the hectic part of the holiday and then you have three days before you come back. They are just days of kind of free, I just think it would be a nice bonus for all of our staff to be able to have these days if we don't need them to get our, our date due.
The only thing I, and I'm, I'm not trying to be pessimist about this, but the rest of the world's going back to work the day after New Year's. So when we talk about kids, they're going to be left at home alone for those three days, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, unless people have more vacation time and extend their Christmas time. That, a lot of people have already probably set up their Christmas breaks with the school break. And maybe I'm wrong.
Maybe we can all just leave it the same.
At this point, if we just left it the same, no, we would not make a motion. We'd just leave it the same and, and bite down later.
I agree with leaving it the same, you don't, you have a lot of unknowns coming up. We don't know if we're going to have to shut down school again, snowstorms. There's a lot of variables out there that leaving it the way we have planned until later in the school years, I feel is probably the best outcome right now.
So we could revisit this at the next meeting and make, change that.
We would revisit it.
Correct.
Correct.
It would just be, I mean, you're going to make, next school board meeting's December 14th. And you're going to be, I mean, that would be possibly tougher on parents and all of a sudden we're dropping a couple of days of school at that time.
I guess I'd like to make a motion to add three days into our Christmas break for the full two weeks at the end of the Christmas break into January.
I got a motion by Kelly, second by Kevin. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same sign? Roll call, Jamie? Kelly? Kevin? Brian? Tammy? Carrie? And Tom, name. Motion, if not carried. I would say let's keep the calendar the same as it is now. And another question I had with that is, when do we talk about cleansing the school? Where does that take that we have to have two weeks? I mean, we made two weeks this time, but to get the school prepared and out, most of the time after five days, you can get into order.
It was more getting the staff back and the students back.
Carrie.
And our, our school's clean every night.
Correct, and I would still explain that we could make that call if we have an outbreak in, in, we would have to deal with it at that time. If we, if we have an outbreak right before Christmas, then we deal with that time. I'm not saying we don't need something, when you talk about the flu season coming around, you're probably talking more late January into February that we might need more time than right now. And, and like I wanted to make point too, that, you know, this last closing wasn't just because of COVID. If anything would have happened near that time, that we lost that many students or that many teachers, it would have, it would have wiped back policy that it's administrative's decision to close the school down when it's a certain percentage. So at this point, the calendar stays as is. Item B. Resignations, do I have a motion for resignation of Brittany Chandler, very professional? Motion by Brian? Second by Jamie, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same sign? Give a motion for resignation of Mitch Miller as the junior high basketball coach.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kevin? Second. Second by Jamie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign.
And you have one more resignation.
I'm sorry.
Andrea Peterson.
Need a motion for resignation of Andrea Peterson. Motion by Brian.
I'll second.
Second by Kelly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Item C. Need a motion to go into executive session.
I'm in motion.
Motion by Kelly.
I'll second.
Second by Jamie. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the same sign. We'll be back. And for the ones that are leaving, I want to really want to thank you all for coming. Remember what the shortage of substitute teachers? Our substitutes come from the public. Anything with a, with a high school diploma can become a substitute teacher. Please think of it because that's what's working with the school right now, that we're not finding enough subs. And also you have to report at the office for that because they have to do a background check on you before you can become a substitute. But I would like to invite anybody to get involved and help us through the situation too. Because there's going to be times where we're going to have more teachers down. Thank you.
The South Dakota Army National Guard helps you get an education and prepares you for life. Joining the South Dakota Army National Guard gives you more than just pride that comes from serving your country. You can earn benefits that help pay for your education and expenses, and you can complete your education while you serve. The South Dakota Army National Guard offers many programs for every type of student, whether you're still in high school, attending college, or working toward a vocational certification. For more information, visit our Facebook and Instagram pages or at nationalguard.com/SD. The South
If you're in need of an electrician, you can count on Patriot Electric for all your electrical needs. We have a dedicated team of professionals that provide quality service and installations on every project. We have more than 100 years of combined experience and knowledge in all aspects of the electrical trade, whether you're trenching, bucket truck, generator, lighting, residential, commercial, industrial, and farm projects. You can count on us to get the job done. Call Patriot Electric at 605-997-3536 or stop by and see us at 209 East Second Avenue.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but not for you. With LG Seeds, you can make the most of your fields with our experts and technology. The stakes are high and preparation matters. Plan your moves. Count on results. LG Seeds. We mean business.
We hope you are all enjoying the student productions of your school. Tonight's event and every event produced by your school during the school year are created, filmed, and produced by the students you love to follow and support. Become a booster of your school's live event coverage by becoming a sponsor. It's a great way to show your support of the athletes and students in your community. As a sponsor, you'll get great visibility for your business, organization, or family by supporting the live productions of your school.
Life's an adventure filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers Union Insurance can provide you the safety net to keep you moving toward your goals and enjoying life's rewards. With multiple locations across the state, Farmers Union Insurance agents provide quick quotes and professional services you deserve. Since 1948, Farmers Union Insurance has focused on ensuring the people of South Dakota, from the most remote quarter section to the busiest intersection. Farmers Union Insurance, ensuring a brighter tomorrow.
The South Dakota Army National Guard helps you get an education and prepares you for life. Joining the South Dakota Army National Guard gives you more than just pride that comes from serving your country. You can earn benefits that help pay for your education and expenses, and you can complete your education while you serve. The South Dakota Army National Guard offers many programs for every type of student, whether you're still in high school, attending college, or working toward a vocational certification. For more information, visit our Facebook and Instagram pages or at nationalguard.com/SD. The South
If you're in need of an electrician, you can count on Patriot Electric for all your electrical needs. We have a dedicated team of professionals that provide quality service and installations on every project. We have more than 100 years of combined experience and knowledge in all aspects of the electrical trade, whether you're trenching, bucket truck, generator, lighting, residential, commercial, industrial, and farm projects. You can count on us to get the job done. Call Patriot Electric at 605-997-3536 or stop by and see us at 209 East Second Avenue.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but not for you. With LG Seeds, you can make the most of your fields with our experts and technology. The stakes are high and preparation matters. Plan your moves. Count on results. LG Seeds. We mean business.
We hope you are all enjoying the student productions of your school. Tonight's event and every event produced by your school during the school year are created, filmed, and produced by the students you love to follow and support. Become a booster of your school's live event coverage by becoming a sponsor. It's a great way to show your support of the athletes and students in your community. As a sponsor, you'll get great visibility for your business, organization, or family by supporting the live productions of your school.
Life's an adventure filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers Union Insurance can provide you the safety net to keep you moving toward your goals and enjoying life's rewards. With multiple locations across the state, Farmers Union Insurance agents provide quick quotes and professional services you deserve. Since 1948, Farmers Union Insurance has focused on ensuring the people of South Dakota, from the most remote quarter section to the busiest intersection. Farmers Union Insurance, ensuring a brighter tomorrow.
The South Dakota Army National Guard helps you get an education and prepares you for life. Joining the South Dakota Army National Guard gives you more than just pride that comes from serving your country. You can earn benefits that help pay for your education and expenses, and you can complete your education while you serve. The South Dakota Army National Guard offers many programs for every type of student, whether you're still in high school, attending college, or working toward a vocational certification. For more information, visit our Facebook and Instagram pages or at nationalguard.com/SD. The South
If you're in need of an electrician, you can count on Patriot Electric for all your electrical needs. We have a dedicated team of professionals that provide quality service and installations on every project. We have more than 100 years of combined experience and knowledge in all aspects of the electrical trade, whether you're trenching, bucket truck, generator, lighting, residential, commercial, industrial, and farm projects. You can count on us to get the job done. Call Patriot Electric at 605-997-3536 or stop by and see us at 209 East Second Avenue.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but not for you. With LG Seeds, you can make the most of your fields with our experts and technology. The stakes are high and preparation matters. Plan your moves. Count on results. LG Seeds. We mean business.
We hope you are all enjoying the student productions of your school. Tonight's event and every event produced by your school during the school year are created, filmed, and produced by the students you love to follow and support. Become a booster of your school's live event coverage by becoming a sponsor. It's a great way to show your support of the athletes and students in your community. As a sponsor, you'll get great visibility for your business, organization, or family by supporting the live productions of your school.
Life's an adventure filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers Union Insurance can provide you the safety net to keep you moving toward your goals and enjoying life's rewards. With multiple locations across the state, Farmers Union Insurance agents provide quick quotes and professional services you deserve. Since 1948, Farmers Union Insurance has focused on ensuring the people of South Dakota, from the most remote quarter section to the busiest intersection. Farmers Union Insurance, ensuring a brighter tomorrow.
The South Dakota Army National Guard helps you get an education and prepares you for life. Joining the South Dakota Army National Guard gives you more than just pride that comes from serving your country. You can earn benefits that help pay for your education and expenses, and you can complete your education while you serve. The South Dakota Army National Guard offers many programs for every type of student, whether you're still in high school, attending college, or working toward a vocational certification. For more information, visit our Facebook and Instagram pages or at nationalguard.com/SD. The South
If you're in need of an electrician, you can count on Patriot Electric for all your electrical needs. We have a dedicated team of professionals that provide quality service and installations on every project. We have more than 100 years of combined experience and knowledge in all aspects of the electrical trade, whether you're trenching, bucket truck, generator, lighting, residential, commercial, industrial, and farm projects. You can count on us to get the job done. Call Patriot Electric at 605-997-3536 or stop by and see us at 209 East Second Avenue.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but not for you. With LG Seeds, you can make the most of your fields with our experts and technology. The stakes are high and preparation matters. Plan your moves. Count on results. LG Seeds. We mean business.
We hope you are all enjoying the student productions of your school. Tonight's event and every event produced by your school during the school year are created, filmed, and produced by the students you love to follow and support. Become a booster of your school's live event coverage by becoming a sponsor. It's a great way to show your support of the athletes and students in your community. As a sponsor, you'll get great visibility for your business, organization, or family by supporting the live productions of your school.
Life's an adventure filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers Union Insurance can provide you the safety net to keep you moving toward your goals and enjoying life's rewards. With multiple locations across the state, Farmers Union Insurance agents provide quick quotes and professional services you deserve. Since 1948, Farmers Union Insurance has focused on ensuring the people of South Dakota, from the most remote quarter section to the busiest intersection. Farmers Union Insurance, ensuring a brighter tomorrow.
The South Dakota Army National Guard helps you get an education and prepares you for life. Joining the South Dakota Army National Guard gives you more than just pride that comes from serving your country. You can earn benefits that help pay for your education and expenses, and you can complete your education while you serve. The South Dakota Army National Guard offers many programs for every type of student, whether you're still in high school, attending college, or working toward a vocational certification. For more information, visit our Facebook and Instagram pages or at nationalguard.com/SD. The South
If you're in need of an electrician, you can count on Patriot Electric for all your electrical needs. We have a dedicated team of professionals that provide quality service and installations on every project. We have more than 100 years of combined experience and knowledge in all aspects of the electrical trade, whether you're trenching, bucket truck, generator, lighting, residential, commercial, industrial, and farm projects. You can count on us to get the job done. Call Patriot Electric at 605-997-3536 or stop by and see us at 209 East Second Avenue.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but not for you. With LG Seeds, you can make the most of your fields with our experts and technology. The stakes are high and preparation matters. Plan your moves. Count on results. LG Seeds. We mean business.
We hope you are all enjoying the student productions of your school. Tonight's event and every event produced by your school during the school year are created, filmed, and produced by the students you love to follow and support. Become a booster of your school's live event coverage by becoming a sponsor. It's a great way to show your support of the athletes and students in your community. As a sponsor, you'll get great visibility for your business, organization, or family by supporting the live productions of your school.
Life's an adventure filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers Union Insurance can provide you the safety net to keep you moving toward your goals and enjoying life's rewards. With multiple locations across the state, Farmers Union Insurance agents provide quick quotes and professional services you deserve. Since 1948, Farmers Union Insurance has focused on ensuring the people of South Dakota, from the most remote quarter section to the busiest intersection. Farmers Union Insurance, ensuring a brighter tomorrow.
The South Dakota Army National Guard helps you get an education and prepares you for life. Joining the South Dakota Army National Guard gives you more than just pride that comes from serving your country. You can earn benefits that help pay for your education and expenses, and you can complete your education while you serve. The South Dakota Army National Guard offers many programs for every type of student, whether you're still in high school, attending college, or working toward a vocational certification. For more information, visit our Facebook and Instagram pages or at nationalguard.com/SD. The South
If you're in need of an electrician, you can count on Patriot Electric for all your electrical needs. We have a dedicated team of professionals that provide quality service and installations on every project. We have more than 100 years of combined experience and knowledge in all aspects of the electrical trade, whether you're trenching, bucket truck, generator, lighting, residential, commercial, industrial, and farm projects. You can count on us to get the job done. Call Patriot Electric at 605-997-3536 or stop by and see us at 209 East Second Avenue.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but not for you. With LG Seeds, you can make the most of your fields with our experts and technology. The stakes are high and preparation matters. Plan your moves. Count on results. LG Seeds. We mean business.
We hope you are all enjoying the student productions of your school. Tonight's event and every event produced by your school during the school year are created, filmed, and produced by the students you love to follow and support. Become a booster of your school's live event coverage by becoming a sponsor. It's a great way to show your support of the athletes and students in your community. As a sponsor, you'll get great visibility for your business, organization, or family by supporting the live productions of your school.
Life's an adventure filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers Union Insurance can provide you the safety net to keep you moving toward your goals and enjoying life's rewards. With multiple locations across the state, Farmers Union Insurance agents provide quick quotes and professional services you deserve. Since 1948, Farmers Union Insurance has focused on ensuring the people of South Dakota, from the most remote quarter section to the busiest intersection. Farmers Union Insurance, ensuring a brighter tomorrow.
The South Dakota Army National Guard helps you get an education and prepares you for life. Joining the South Dakota Army National Guard gives you more than just pride that comes from serving your country. You can earn benefits that help pay for your education and expenses, and you can complete your education while you serve. The South Dakota Army National Guard offers many programs for every type of student, whether you're still in high school, attending college, or working toward a vocational certification. For more information, visit our Facebook and Instagram pages or at nationalguard.com/SD. The South
If you're in need of an electrician, you can count on Patriot Electric for all your electrical needs. We have a dedicated team of professionals that provide quality service and installations on every project. We have more than 100 years of combined experience and knowledge in all aspects of the electrical trade, whether you're trenching, bucket truck, generator, lighting, residential, commercial, industrial, and farm projects. You can count on us to get the job done. Call Patriot Electric at 605-997-3536 or stop by and see us at 209 East Second Avenue.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but not for you. That may be good enough for the other guy, but not for you. With LG Seeds, you can make the most of your fields with our experts and technology. The stakes are high and preparation matters. Plan your moves. Count on results. LG Seeds, we mean business.
We hope you are all enjoying the student productions of your school. Tonight's event and every event produced by your school during the school year are created, filmed, and produced by the students you love to follow and support. Become a booster of your school's live event coverage by becoming a sponsor. It's a great way to show your support of the athletes and students in your community. As a sponsor, you'll get great visibility for your business, organization, or family by supporting the live productions of your school.
Life's an adventure filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers Union Insurance can provide you the safety net to keep you moving toward your goals and enjoying life's rewards. With multiple locations across the state, Farmers Union Insurance agents provide quick quotes and professional services you deserve. Since 1948, Farmers Union Insurance has focused on ensuring the people of South Dakota, from the most remote quarter section to the busiest intersection. Farmers Union Insurance, ensuring a brighter tomorrow.
The South Dakota Army National Guard helps you get an education and prepares you for life. Joining the South Dakota Army National Guard gives you more than just pride that comes from serving your country. You can earn benefits that help pay for your education and expenses, and you can complete your education while you serve. The South Dakota Army National Guard offers many programs for every type of student, whether you're still in high school, attending college, or working toward a vocational certification. For more information, visit our Facebook and Instagram pages, or at nationalguard.com/SD.
If you're in need of an electrician, you can count on Patriot Electric for all your electrical needs. We have a dedicated team of professionals that provide quality service and installations on every project. We have more than 100 years of combined experience and knowledge in all aspects of the electrical trade, where your trenching, bucket truck, generator, lighting, residential, commercial, industrial, and farm projects. You can count on us to get the job done. Call Patriot Electric at (605) 997-3536, or stop by and see us at 209 East Second Avenue.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but not for you. With LG Seeds, you can make the most of your fields with our experts and technology. The stakes are high and preparation matters. Plan your moves. Count on results. LG Seeds, we mean business.
We hope you are all enjoying the student productions of your school. Tonight's event and every event produced by your school during the school year are created, filmed, and produced by the students you love to follow and support. Become a booster of your school's live event coverage by becoming a sponsor. It's a great way to show your support of the athletes and students in your community. As a sponsor, you'll get great visibility for your business, organization, or family by supporting the live productions of your school.
Life's an adventure filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers Union Insurance can provide you the safety net to keep you moving toward your goals and enjoying life's rewards. With multiple locations across the state, Farmers Union Insurance agents provide quick quotes and professional services you deserve. Since 1948, Farmers Union Insurance has focused on ensuring the people of South Dakota, from the most remote quarter section to the busiest intersection. Farmers Union Insurance, ensuring a brighter tomorrow.
The South Dakota Army National Guard helps you get an education and prepares you for life. Joining the South Dakota Army National Guard gives you more than just pride that comes from serving your country. You can earn benefits that help pay for your education and expenses, and you can complete your education while you serve. The South Dakota Army National Guard offers many programs for every type of student, whether you're still in high school, attending college, or working toward a vocational certification. For more information, visit our Facebook and Instagram pages, or at nationalguard.com/SD.
If you're in need of an electrician, you can count on Patriot Electric for all your electrical needs. We have a dedicated team of professionals that provide quality service and installations on every project. We have more than 100 years of combined experience and knowledge in all aspects of the electrical trade, where your trenching, bucket truck, generator, lighting, residential, commercial, industrial, and farm projects. You can count on us to get the job done. Call Patriot Electric at (605) 997-3536, or stop by and see us at 209 East Second Avenue.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but not for you. With LG Seeds, you can make the most of your fields with our experts and technology. The stakes are high and preparation matters. Plan your moves. Count on results. LG Seeds, we mean business.
We hope you are all enjoying the student productions of your school. Tonight's event and every event produced by your school during the school year are created, filmed, and produced by the students you love to follow and support. Become a booster of your school's live event coverage by becoming a sponsor. It's a great way to show your support of the athletes and students in your community. As a sponsor, you'll get great visibility for your business, organization, or family by supporting the live productions of your school.
Life's an adventure filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers Union Insurance can provide you the safety net to keep you moving toward your goals and enjoying life's rewards. With multiple locations across the state, Farmers Union Insurance agents provide quick quotes and professional services you deserve. Since 1948, Farmers Union Insurance has focused on ensuring the people of South Dakota, from the most remote quarter section to the busiest intersection. Farmers Union Insurance, ensuring a brighter tomorrow.
The South Dakota Army National Guard helps you get an education and prepares you for life. Joining the South Dakota Army National Guard gives you more than just pride that comes from serving your country. You can earn benefits that help pay for your education and expenses, and you can complete your education while you serve. The South Dakota Army National Guard offers many programs for every type of student, whether you're still in high school, attending college, or working toward a vocational certification. For more information, visit our Facebook and Instagram pages, or at nationalguard.com/SD.
If you're in need of an electrician, you can count on Patriot Electric for all your electrical needs. We have a dedicated team of professionals that provide quality service and installations on every project. We have more than 100 years of combined experience and knowledge in all aspects of the electrical trade, where your trenching, bucket truck, generator, lighting, residential, commercial, industrial, and farm projects. You can count on us to get the job done. Call Patriot Electric at (605) 997-3536, or stop by and see us at 209 East Second Avenue.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but not for you. With LG Seeds, you can make the most of your fields with our experts and technology. The stakes are high and preparation matters. Plan your moves. Count on results. LG Seeds, we mean business.
We hope you are all enjoying the student productions of your school. Tonight's event and every event produced by your school during the school year are created, filmed, and produced by the students you love to follow and support. Become a booster of your school's live event coverage by becoming a sponsor. It's a great way to show your support of the athletes and students in your community. As a sponsor, you'll get great visibility for your business, organization, or family by supporting the live productions of your school.
Life's an adventure filled with excitement, challenges, and achievements. Farmers
New hires back to Eagle Seven. I need new hires. A, do I have a motion for transfer Blake Sabre from junior high track to high school track, fall spot? Motion by Brian, second by Kelly. All those in favor say aye. Oppose the same sign. New hire Jesse Bryan for junior high basketball. Need a motion? Motion by Brian. Second by Tammy. All those in favor say aye. Oppose the same sign. Joe Parsley, business tech teacher with junior high basketball, fall position, and junior high track, safety position. Motion by Kelly. Second by Carrie. All those in favor say aye. Oppose the same sign. Need a motion for Brenda, Brenda Bayman, high school, evening to scodion. Motion by Kevin. Second by Carrie. All those in favor say aye. Oppose the same sign. Need a motion for Carly Grobman, winter cheer coach. Motion by Kelly. Second by Jamie. All those in favor say aye. Oppose the same sign. Need a motion for the low mode for paraprofessional? Motion by, motion by Carrie. Second by Brian. All those in favor say aye. Oppose the same sign. Need a motion to it here? Motion by, motion by Kevin. Second by Brian. All those in favor say aye. Oppose the same sign.